This year, we entered 105 kids in the regionals and then advanced 69 to the state finals. And in the state finals, 29 kids finished in the top three, receiving gold medals and bronze and silvers. We ended up with two teams, two groups of kids. The ladies behind me, winning the medical math for Tiffany Yang. Medical math. And for entrepreneurship, Leah Lee, Ying Zhang, Angela Zhao, and Sophia Zhu. They are your California state champions and will represent California Temple City High School, Temple City, at the national championships in Atlanta, Georgia this year. So.
Do you guys want to ask some questions or anything? Yes.
So, how long have each of you been involved in Skills USA?
We have been involved since last year.
I've also been involved since last year.
I've been involved with this, oh, like, sorry, this year.
Wow, that's great. You're all fairly new to it. You won the state championship. That's awesome.
When is the national championship? When is the national?
National championships are in June, the 23rd through the 29th.
Great.
All right.
And we go up, the way Skills USA is structured is that only the state championship advance to the nationals, and they go up against the other 50 state champions to determine who is the best.
And we know our kids are the best.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
We've won it more times.
Wow.
We're just so extremely proud of you. That's quite an accomplishment to go from such a large group to a group of our very, our elite champions here. So, thank you for, thank you for all your work representing your school and your fellow students, too. That's, you're doing such a fabulous job representing, you're putting Temple City on the map.
Thank you.
Lovely.
So, I wanted to say that I was able to go on the Saturday and see some of the students. You could not go into a lot of the events, but I will say, the entrepreneur team, like, I just knew they were going to win because when they came out, they were all giggles and happy and like, they just knew they nailed it. And I was like, that team's going to win. And sure enough, they ended up getting first place. We have certificates for you, but I am sure that pales in comparison to what came in today, which is their state championship banners. And congratulations, and we know you're going to do well in nationals. And we have certificates.
Ying?
Thank you.
Ours are nice.
Yeah, those states should have good chiflings.
Angela? Sophia?
Thank you.
And our medical man, Tiffany. And I know Mr. Jan Bazian has a camera to take pictures, so if you want to come up in front and have the board come up with you and your advisor, absolutely come up there. Just in front. Keep going. Keep going.
Jerry, is this a?
No.
Okay.
Put your medals on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I have your name.
He doesn't have it.
He has his name.
I can't see them.
Hold it down, just below the.
Is he in your teeth?
There we go. Can you do it just like they're doing?
I have a tooth.
That's okay, she's showing the whole banner.
All right, here we go.
Congratulations. Okay, our next, we have quite a crowd tonight for a reason, and Dawn Tarran and Kristy Ferntile are going to come up and explain why there's such a large crowd here tonight.
You want me to?
Do you want other people from the committee up here, too, with you?
It's fine. We've got a lot in the audience, so thank you very much for all of our wonderful Camellia Committee. We have a good one. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. We are so thankful and grateful for all that Temple City Unified School District does for the Camellia Festival, supporting of our kids. And not sure if you're aware, but when we do well at the Camellia Festival, the kids do well. We are giving out, not just tonight, but over our course, 23,000, over $23,000 to our youth groups. So, tonight, we'd like to bring up some people from the district that are getting some cash. All right. First off, we'd like to recognize the musical. And doing double duty tonight because the band is at Disneyland, you know, the band. And Miriam Sunderman from the girls' basketball team.
Mike?
Okay, Michael, for girls' basketball today. And our Heliotec people.
Why don't you come in front?
Stand here. Come here.
Mike, just stay there.
You're not done yet, Mike. And ASB.
That's it, you have ASB people here.
Oh, we have ASB people, very cute. Principal Jordan from Oak. Principal Kyle from Longdon. Principal Elena from the high school. Principal Myra from Emperor. Sorry.
I was going to take it.
Thank you, thank you.
Wait, wait, don't go away.
Principal Julia from Cloverly. Principal Linda from La Rosa. And we've got Ms. Kelly Morrison from the Cloverly Dance Team. Tiffany from the Grad Night Committee. Certainly. And Emily Williams from the Temple City Schools Foundation. We are so appreciative of all that you do for our kids. Yeah, I'm a little biased because this is where I spent my career, but I got to tell you, good place to work, good place to work. All right, thank you.
All right, what do you want?
Push together like you like, Angela.
I think you should put them.
Everything's got to take its step back.
Well, they have good behind you.
Can we also have Camellia Festival committee people come on up, too? Yes.
Your shirts.
I love your love, boy. I love it.
I'm going to have to get on Lost Hymn.
The band ones.
Give me the band ones.
Ms. May.
Come on up.
Oh, May totally. Come on, May, you got to pull the band. I have to know who. She's hiding over there. You can hide down here.
Well. This isn't going to work.
What do you want us to do?
Well, squeeze in or some of the young folks.
Okay.
You're there.
I'm on your two feet.
I have pants to get over.
I'm ready.
Okay. Okay, good.
That better?
That's going to work out just perfect. I was going to say, if you're under 30, get down on your. Let me just take a quick look. See everybody's face. One more. Good, thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. It's pretty when I look out in the audience.
Trying to figure out what they're representing.
Mary, I think you should make the volume forward now, like it's.
Everybody to the front seats.
All of these people, they represent so many different groups. You don't know for which part.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight, public comments on agendized, oh, you, okay, right, right, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. My bad.
I had the wrong agenda.
Is that right now?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Public comments on agendized and non-agendized items. Do we have any? I guess there's no comments. Okay, moving on to our community update. The elementary science limpieด is this Saturday at Temple City High School, starting at 9:00 a.m., and we have teams that are representing Cloverly, Emperor, and Longdon, who will be competing on Saturday. So, let's wish them all luck. Open house events are continuing. Brighter Side Singers have a showcase this Friday at 7:00 at the high school. This Friday morning, or morning into the afternoon, we are hosting the Selpa Spring Social at the high school. Longdon is going to have their multicultural night on May 2nd. Okay, and next week is the choreo showcase at the high school. The Camellia Festival theme contest continues through May 2nd, and all youth are encouraged to submit their ideas for the theme for the 2025 Camellia Festival. Doesn't seem like we're already talking about the 2025 Camellia Festival, but there you go. The winner actually gets to ride in the parade next year and win money. So, encourage any youth that you know to submit a contest theme. State testing continues, and many of our sports, many, many of our sports are heading into, they're into the end of their seasons, including many, many, many going into playoffs, I understand. Girls softball have done, and boys volleyball. Let's see, and so we want to wish the best of luck to all of our students. The district is celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week this week and Classified Staff Appreciation Week the week of May 20th to the 24th. And before we say goodbye to our high school stadium, there's going to be a celebration called Friday Night Lights on June 7th, so if you're interested in helping plan the event or if you have anything you'd like to add to the cause, please contact the high school office. And please just spread the word, put it on Facebook, put it wherever you can imagine you can put it. So, we just want to spread the word of what's coming up, and you, too, could maybe take home a jar of dirt or piece of that one. Okay, we're moving on to, excuse me, bargaining unit, excuse me, bargaining units, and first up is CSCE 823.
Why do I got to go first?
We're rotating them?
You want to feed off them?
Just to make it fun.
So, you want to feed off me is going to be nice.
All right, good evening, all, for everybody sitting up here. It's been a while since I've been at this podium, huh? Never good, nah. I just, so, we wrapped up our negotiations, which we did put in a lot of work, and I appreciate tomorrow Connie and Anthony, he's not here, for the work, and Daryl, for the work they've done on your side of the table. Now, there's an item on there that my membership is not happy with, so tomorrow we do our ratification, and I have a really strong feeling it's not going to go through, so we've got to get back to the table. So, I just wanted to thank the district for the patience and collaborating and working together and hashing things out. It's not an easy process, it's, you know, we put in a lot of work, effort, time, knowledge, research, and, you know, and the membership has the last say, so I could only do so much, but, and that's part of the process, you know, they vote on what we finalize, and they're not happy with one item, so they'll have their say tomorrow. But it's no hard to the district that we're not trying to be bargaining with them and trying to put a bump in the road, it's just the process, and we're just going to have to get back to the table. And I'm fairly confident that we could figure something out. Other than that, I am looking forward to the school year to finish. Things have been pretty busy at the high school. I've been there during the days, the past couple, it would have been a month and a half, maybe, and see a different side of what goes on there at the high school than what I do at night. But I'm really looking forward to getting in there and doing what I do best, is getting that place cleaned up, ready for the kids to come back to the next year. All right, thank you, and hope I don't have to come back up here again.
Thank you, Art. Okay, TCEA, and tonight, we have Ellen.
No comments, same here.
Okay, well, hi, thanks for coming. Okay, CSCE 105, and I see papers and hands, I'm.
Oh, it's the agenda.
Okay. I thought it was many pages of, okay. I thought you had many pages you were going to be.
It's here, it's in.
Okay, thank you. District updates, Connie.
Yes, and good evening, Board of Education, Mrs. Niss, Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Kuna, and the union leadership and executive chairman. Right before coming to the board meeting, I get a call from Foothill Credit Union, and our rep is very happy to tell me that today, the Foothill Credit Union Board approved my request to establish commercial credit program. So, currently, the district uses CalCard, and we have some issue with the CalCard. Their lack of service is making the situation very daunting and worse, so we are a little bit frustrated. So, I pick up phone, talk to Patrick, and say, hey, you want to join us? So, I think there's nothing to worry about, we are public school, we are going nowhere, you know, we cannot fight bankruptcy, we cannot, you know, take the money leave, so, and he definitely advocated for us, and then I'm so glad that, you know, our credit union, their business model is very conservative because they need to protect their member, but I'm so glad that they realize that they can trust us and trust me, we can have a good adventure, and then I'm willing to use us as the experimentary example, and I will help accept the foundation and the protocols. So, hopefully that the program will work very well, and they can expand to other districts, their memberships. So, that's definitely good news. And the district submitted the P-28 attendance, we have 5,057,88, that is 2088 higher than P-1. So, this school year, we have 25 students compared with last year CalPads students, and today, we actually have nine more students. Today's enrollment is 5261, so that's definitely, definitely good news. I'm very happy until I hit my email. I received two emails from JPA, that is definitely my happiness, because the 2088 will not cover the bills I received, so, but I will let you guys know that definitely good news, because we are in the educational business, we don't have kids, we don't have a business, so the 2024/25 enrollment is already open, please come to school, enroll your kids. We are good school district, right? Skill USA, number one state.
We have the best.
Yes. And California CD, they released the 2324, the first interim report certification. The board noted that the district, when we submit the second interim report, will self-qualify as an unqualified report, which means we are good, right? So, the CD said that the first interim report statewide compared with last year's first and second, there are 200% increase for number of school district list on the qualified certification, which is, there's a possibility that their financial, they cannot meet their financial obligation for the current next two years. So, we have our neighbor district, one is at the right, one is left, which is east and west, the two district on the list, and I'm sorry, Donna, one of the district located in your, in the city you form worked. So, I know it is a challenge not to all the school districts, so we, as a board and superintendent, we were definitely, we were, while we appreciate all our employees, their hard work, and we almost closed for negotiation, but the long-term financial services is also our responsibility. We just need a balance. So, yesterday, I know that Jerry, you hosted the last convenience students of the month, and I think I heard correctly, there's two students from different school, they like our food. Is that right? Thank you. Finally, I heard some good news. Yeah. So, later today, the board will take care of that, approve, adopt, 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 next week, next week will be our nutrition employees week. So, this is a good time to thank our food service worker, our director, for their hard work and their dedication for students, students meals, and improve our meal offering the district. And I think we're also getting good news last week, and the CD and USDA, they approved our meal application from August to October 2022. So, that's definitely good news. So, Dr. Kuna and I, we do see that, that's coming. Dr. Kuna, you want to say something? I know you, you use your manpower, you're involved in the county of education and increase superintendent, so we are very happy about that.
Yeah, it's good to know people. It was an additional $500,000 that we were not going to be reimbursed for in our food services program, that the state is now going to reimburse us. And we didn't, we weren't confident it was going to happen, but with the support of Laco and some of their staff, and the conversations that we had with CDE and the nutrition services folks, we're going to be getting that reimbursement. So, that's good news for our kids.
Yes. So, I have two more, sorry, boss. Six week, we are going to start in the TCH's, the project, and we are very excited, and behind the scene, the team, including our architect from Wizzelito and our, our project management company, and our team, just, we're starting the bid process, and the team hosts two job work, and we have high turnover, so which mean that more contract, contract in the pool, we have. Yes, yes, turn out.
Turn out.
Yes, yes, turn out, yeah, yeah.
Turn over.
Oh, I'm sorry, turnover, okay. So, my thoughts and the word didn't match, sorry, turn out. So, and we're also starting prepare for the bid and the contract agreement, so board are going to have a lot of material to read for the, in the May board meetings. So, lastly, that, Marie, thank you so much for your service this week, is Administrative Professional Week, and Donna is definitely right, you are the best of the best, so we appreciate everything you do, and I think we did not see enough. But I also thank all the administrative assistants, you know, your contribution for the success of the students and your support of our daily operations. Thank you. That's my update, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Okay, Educational Services, Richard Lowman.
Good evening, everybody. This time of year in Ed Services, it feels like everything is in flux as we finish the school year out, but we're preparing to start the new school year. So, as I was sitting down to write my board comments, I thought I'd talk about what we're doing between now and May. So, state testing is underway, so we're supporting our sites in state testing. Summer school is ramping up, so we're working with HR to hire teachers, but also working with our families to invite our students, working with our site principals to make sure they're prepared for our kids in summer. Top 28 site plans are coming along, so I'm excited to see what those look like when they're finally done. We're finalizing curriculum adoptions for science, and hopefully we'll be bringing that to the board soon. We're in the process of purchasing consumables for our current curriculum for the 2425 school year. LCAP, we can't forget LCAP, it's out there, we're working on that one. We're looking at our educational technology, both what we're going to cut and what we're looking forward in the future and what we're going to renew. PBIS recognition, we have two schools up for recognition this year, so hopefully we'll be bringing those to you guys sometime early next school year. We're working on enrollment, Connie, constantly, daily, non-stop at all the sites, as well as the district office. We're working on our dual-language immersion policy and practices and procedures that will launch in 24, or 25, 26. We're working with Quok in the back on one-to-one devices, the purchasing of one-to-one devices, those items that need to be renewed, as well as classroom devices to help mitigate learning loss, where we still have funding from the state from COVID money that we're using. And then we're building out our summer PD plan that will support our learning initiatives, as well as the new next-generation science textbooks that we're buying. Probably the most important piece, though, is the district office has synced their calendars, and next week, we will meet with the principals and we will sync their calendars with ours to kind of reduce some of the overlapping we've seen in the past to try to lessen the blow for you guys, our families, for us, for our kiddos. Nothing will be perfect, but it will be better than this year, so that's mine.
Okay, and tomorrow.
Good evening, Board of Education. Classified Employee of the Year nominations window will close this Friday. We're looking forward to celebrating our amazing classified staff. We have successfully closed out negotiations for all our unions. We are one step away, like Art spoke about, from finalizing our tentative agreements, and that final step is the unions accepting the agreements, and then we will bring them to board for approval. I really sincerely want to thank our union leaders, as well as our negotiations teams, for their dedication, collaboration, and continued commitment to our district. We are in the midst of hiring, and I cannot say this with a bigger smile on my face, we are getting the cream of the crop and a good pool of qualified applicants with all of our positions, so it is the best thing for HR in our district because we are really pulling in quality employees, and so it's very good. So, A+ on that one. And today, on Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day, I want to commemorate the 109th anniversary of the Armenian genocide of 1915. I want to honor. It was an additional five hundred thousand dollars that we were not going to be reimbursed for in our food services program that the state is now going to reimburse us. And we didn't, we weren't confident it was going to happen. But with the support of, of Laco and, and some of their staff and the conversations that we had with C D E and, and the nutrition services folks, we're, we're going to be getting that reimbursement. So that's good news for our kids.
Yes. So I have two more, sorry boss. Six week, we are going to starting the TCH's, the project and we are very excited. And behind the scene, the team, including our architect firm with little and our, our our project manager company and our team just, we're starting the bid process and the, the team hosts two job work and we have a high turnover. So which mean that more contract, contract in the pool.
Turn out.
Yes, yes, turn out.
Turn out.
Yes, yes, turn out. Yeah, yeah.
Turn over.
Oh, I'm sorry. Turn over, okay. So my thoughts and the word didn't match, sorry, turn out. So, and we're also starting prepare for the bid and the contract agreement. So board, you're going to have a lot of material to read for the, in the May board meetings. So lastly, that Marie, thank you so much for your service. This week is administrative professional week. And Donna is definitely right, you are the best of the best. So we appreciate everything you do and I think we did not see enough. But I also thank all the administrative assistant, you know, your contribution for the success of the students and your support of our daily operations. Thank you. That's my update. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, Educational Services, Richard Lowman.
Good evening, everybody. This time of year in ed services, it feels like everything is in flux as we finish the school year out, but we're preparing to start the new school year. So as I was sitting down to write my board comments, I thought I'd talk about what we're doing between now and May. So state testing is underway, so we're supporting our sites and state, state testing. Summer school is ramping up, so we're working with H R to, to hire teachers, but also working with our families to invite our students, working with our site principals to make sure they're prepared for our kids in summer. Prop twenty eight site plans are coming along, so I'm excited to see what those look like when they're finally done. We're finalizing curriculum adoptions for science and hopefully we'll be bringing that to the board soon. We're in the process of purchasing consumables for our current curriculum for the twenty four, twenty five school year. L cap, we can't forget L cap, it's out there, we're working on that one. We're looking at our educational technology, both what we're going to cut and what we're looking forward in the future and what we're going to renew. P B I S recognition, we have two schools up for recognition this year, so hopefully we'll be bringing those to you guys sometime early next school year. We're working on enrollment, Connie, constantly, daily, nonstop at all the sites as well as the district office. We're working on our dual language immersion policy and practices and procedures that will launch in twenty four, or twenty five, twenty six. We're working with Quokk in the back on one to one devices, the purchasing of one to one devices, those items that need to be renewed, as well as classroom devices to help mitigate learning loss, where we still have funding from the state from COVID money that we're, we're using. And then we're building out our summer P D plan that will support our learning initiatives as well as the new next generation science textbooks that we're buying. Probably the most important piece, though, is the district office has synced their calendars. And next week, we will meet with the principals and we will sync their calendars with ours to kind of reduce some of the overlapping we've seen in the past to try to lessen the blow for you guys, our families, for us, for our kiddos. Nothing will be perfect, but it will be better than this year. So that's mine.
Okay, and tomorrow.
Good evening, Board of Education. Classified Employee of the Year nominations window will close this Friday. We're looking forward to celebrating our amazing classified staff. We have successfully closed out negotiations for all our unions. We are one step away, like Art spoke about, from finalizing our tentative agreements and that final step is the unions accepting the agreements. And then we will bring them to board for approval. I really sincerely want to thank our union leaders as well as our negotiations teams for their dedication, collaboration, and continued commitment to our district. We are in the midst of hiring and I cannot say this with a bigger smile on my face. We are getting the cream of the crop and a good pool of qualified applicants with all of our positions. So it is the best thing for H R in our district because we are really pulling in quality employees. And so it's, it's very good. So A plus on that one. And today on Armenian genocide remembrance day, I want to commemorate the hundred ninth anniversary of the Armenian genocide of nineteen fifteen. I want to honor the memory of the victims and those who survived as we strive for a future of peace and justice for all. And last but not least, happy admin assistant to all of our amazing admin assistants in T C. We really have the best of the best. And the queen bee is right in front of us, Marie Montero, can't get any better. So thank you so much. We are very, very proud of all of you and grateful for all the work that you do.
Thank you very much. Moving on to board member comments, we're going to start with member Georgino.
Thank you. Our students are always accomplishing so much. And we have, when we have a big break between board meetings, they do so many things that, let me just say, congratulations Drumline, Temple City High School, Science Olympiad, Corio, Future Business Leaders of America, Skills USA, Guard, Men's Choir, and Temple City High School student Allison, who was a finalist for Congresswoman Judy Chue's art contest. They all did outstanding in the last month. Since our last meeting, I attended the Dr. Doug Sears Learning Center Open House. It was really nice. There was a great turnout for that. I also attended the girls softball senior night, which they won that game. And I believe that was their forty seventh straight Rio Hondo League win. So it's been over four years since they've lost a Rio Hondo League game. And they'll be going into C I F and of course, we wish them the best of luck and look forward to going to some of their games. I attended the Book of Will at Temple City High School. And there was so much work that went into that. I was so impressed. We have some excellent actors at Temple City High School and I really enjoyed that. I'm not, you know, big Shakespeare fan, but that was good. It was funny and I enjoyed it. Also, thank you to the Kiwanis Club for the Student of the Month program last night. Looking forward to starting that up again next year. It's always enjoyable. Last night, I attended the boys volleyball, their first C I F playoff game. And afterwards, I had to go to the hospital, the cardiac unit, because that, that was so stressful. But they won and it was so exciting. And so they'll be playing again tomorrow, is it, Elena? Yeah. Okay, not at home, though. Yeah, boy, it was really great. Went into the fifth set and it was very close. And we thought we had it won and then they reversed the call and then, but we ended up winning, so it was really fun. Best of luck to the Oak Avenue Science Bowl team who will be participating in the national competition in Washington, D C on Saturday. Also Grad Night is having a dine out at Lucille's in Montebello tomorrow from eleven to ten. So if you don't have plans for lunch or dinner or both, Jerry, that would be great for you. Go over there, get dinner and help out Grad Night. Also, I want, I don't know if, if everyone has seen the Heliotek video on the district's Instagram page, but if you haven't, go to Temple City Unified Instagram page and watch that video. Our students are amazing and you can learn more about their solar car program. I wanted to give one more plug for the Camellia Festival. I don't think a lot of people realize that when you participate in the Camellia Festival, you are helping the youth of our community because the Camellia Festival's mission is to support the youth in the community. And whenever we have a good year and we make money, we just pour it back into our youth groups. So I want to encourage everyone to go to the Camellia Festival, get involved in the Camellia Festival. And if you want, you can even be on the committee. We have lots of positions available for someone who'd like to be involved. And last but not least, happy Administrative Professionals Day, especially to Marie, who takes such good care of the Board of Education. And thank you to our school nutrition workers also.
Thank you. Okay, next up is member Bell.
Hi, good evening, everyone. And as my fellow board member, Mr. Georgino said, there's just a lot of things going on, especially during this time of year, and we haven't met in a month. So, you know, I was being honest when I sat here and I was asking, where have I been? What have I seen? And I never really kept track of that, but, you know, I'm glad that, remember Georgino mentioned a whole lot of the things that fortunately I was able to attend as well. And, and I echo her comments, you know, we have amazing kids, just absolutely wonderful. For me personally, being able to go to the open houses is, again, it's a reaffirmation of what we do, why we're here. And, and we're so, I'm so appreciative of, of the talent that, and, and really the heart of our kids and what it is that they do and how they show it to everybody, families and the community members. It's, it's fantastic. Emperor's Open House, always fabulous, always is, never changes, don't expect it to ever change and just keeps spending, getting better every time. The Learning Center, really like how they continue to support some of our students even after they've graduated because I, you know, recognize a few of them. And I'm so glad that they're here. I'm so glad that we're continuing to provide services for them. And the only things that I kind of get mostly involved in on a personal level are some of our STEM competitions. Yeah, I want to congratulate our Science Olympiad teams for Oak Avenue and Temple City High School. They did outstanding this year as they always do. And, you know, we're getting ready and prepared to look forward to the upcoming season. And we're going to throw a few wrinkles in there as well, so we're kind of excited about that. And yes, best of luck to our Science Bowl team in Washington. Definitely rooting for you. And La Rosa Steam Night was fantastic as always. I'm glad that we were able to contribute there, have some of our high school kids showcase some of the work that they've been doing and sharing it with our younger elementary folks because really that's important. That's the core of everything that we do. And our solar team have started making their rounds to some of our elementary schools. They were at Cloverly earlier this week, or yesterday actually, to take part in their Earth Day celebrations to show what it is that they do and why they feel their project is important. And, you know, for some of the kids to kind of see what it's about and something to look forward to perhaps at the high school level. And they will continue to make their rounds. I understand that they're communicating with Emperor, perhaps that'll be their next stop along the many tour, along all the elementary schools and possibly Oak as well. And, you know, we have the Division Eight tournament coming up on Saturday. That means I'm just gonna have to just turn my phone off and just keep working all the way through until the end. And it's just great to be able to do that. We have about fifty six schools coming from all over the place in L A County to, to, to take part in it. And it's such a great opportunity for us to showcase what it is that we do here in Temple City. And finally, Marie, yes, without you, I don't know where I'm going half the time. So, you know, I, I do truly appreciate everything that you've done for us, for me personally, and keeping me on track with some of these events that we have, especially during this time of year, it's extremely busy. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. And that's it for me this evening.
Hey, thank you. Okay, member Espinoza.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start off by recognizing National Denim Day, which recognizes sexual assault awareness and the significance is basically in wearing jeans is to, is a statement against blaming victims for sexual assault based on what they wear. So that's why I'm wearing jeans today. I also want to acknowledge Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day and also want to recognize Administrative Professionals Day to all our administrative professionals. Thank you so much for what you do every day. I especially want to recognize Marie Montero. I love you. You're awesome and you take care of us, so thank you so much. This year, this time of year is very celebratory. There's so many things to celebrate, lots of kids accomplishments. And so I know member Georgino talked about all of the students that have some congratulations in order. And the open houses are also a way to congratulate kids for all their work and to see it displayed so beautifully. I really enjoy going and, and putting together some collages and sharing it with the community. So I'm looking forward to the open houses that are left. I did attend the Emperor Open House and the D D S L C Open House. But it's just such a great time to celebrate our kids and we take that all the way through to our promotions and our graduation. So I'm looking forward to the remainder of the school year and celebrating everything that not only our kids do, but everything that all of our classified and certificated staff do in supporting our students. It's, which actually brings me to the appreciation weeks that are coming up. I want to recognize our certificated and classified staff and so grateful for everything that you all do. You guys are the heart of what we do. We could not do what we do with students without you. You are, you are the people that make it happen. So thank you so much. I hope next, the weeks that we are celebrating that you feel special and that your P T As who do a lot of work to, to spoil you all, that you feel special and, and spoiled. And then in terms of attendance, I mean, we've been out for a while, so there's a lot of things that I did attend. On the nineteenth of March, I attended the Temple City Foundation meeting and then I stopped over to the swearing in of Tom Chavez and the newest city council member, Ed Chen. I want to congratulate both of them. And then Open House at Emperor, P T A March brunch. And then Family Literacy Night at Longden. Then the D D S L C Student of the Month, my P T A board meeting. And then right now, I'm kind of focused on working on my P T A Council historian deliverables, so hopefully we'll get that done. And, and just, I think that, that, oh, that, yeah. And then the play, I did go to the Book of Will, which I really, really enjoyed. And so I'm just looking forward to celebrating through the end of the year. So thank you all for, for what you do.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go last. I attended the annual Cesar Chavez Assembly at Emperor last week. That's okay. Do you want to say something?
No. I was like, oh.
I want to thank Timothy Rodriguez for arranging that every year. Cesar Chavez's grandson was the speaker and the kids are always, and the second graders did a great job of creating a, just a wonderful assembly, celebrating the work of Cesar Chavez and the United Farm Workers. Last week, I attended the Chamber's Legislative Roundtable with newly installed Mayor Chavez. And we can be really proud of our working relationship with the city. I think the city and the district working together makes, makes for, it, it's a great benefit to the whole community. I want to thank Di Marino and Mrs. Reddy and the, and La Rosa staff for creating a great steam night. The place was absolutely packed. There were, the Heliotek team was, was there and they figured out a way to make solar powered cars go in the dark, which is quite impressive. But it was a fun night. Families were just having a ball, the kids were having a ball. Congratulations to our librarians and our administrative professionals. You are the queen of the administrative professionals in this district. And I just, I thank you for everything you've done to, to support and guide, to guide us and take care of the board. You're just wonderful. I also want to thank our school nutrition employees for their, for all their work. I want to thank everybody involved in the Family Literacy Night. There are a lot of, it was kind of a cold rainy night, but people came out and again had a great time. I had a chance to attend the District Choral Festival and the Elementary Orchestra and band concerts. It brought back a lot of memories of going to see my former students in their first concert and it, the parents were just so proud of what those, their students have accomplished. It's really great to see. Last Saturday, I, I also attended the Book of Will. We have such talented students, just in everything they do, whether it's athletics or performing arts or whatever they, they do, or Skills USA students, they just are outstanding in everything. If you travel along Temple City Boulevard, take notice of the work that was done around the planted areas there by Food Ed in conjunction with our student staff and volunteers from East West Bank. They were out there, they spent apparently many, many hours putting new mulch out there and updating, and weeding and updating the plants around the high school. So if you drive by, just take a look and it really looks very nice. Let's see. This is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. And I wanted to, I, I was reading an update from Mrs. Reddy from La Rosa and I asked if I could share some of her words. And she said, "This is a time we come together to celebrate and promote understanding and inclusivity. Our goal is to foster a, a culture of empathy, kindness, and support for individuals with autism and their families." And this month is our month to recognize our autistic students. So thank you, thank you to her for sharing some of her, letting, letting me share some of her words. So I was moving on, I'm just going to go really quick because my fellow board members have mentioned a lot of this. But congratulations to our Skills USA team, Science Bowl team going on to, going to D C is so exciting. I had a chance earlier this year to stop by the advanced steam class and see some of the work they did and I, some of those students are heading back there with Mrs. Shifter. And we just know they're going to do a great job. So I, I'm going to just say ditto to all the groups that, that member Georgino mentioned, but congratulations to all the teams or groups that are representing the high school. They're taking time, they're taking extra effort to represent their school and their fellow students. So thank you to all those groups that put in those extra hours and the parents who support them through it all, too. Let's see. And as we head towards the end of the year, we have lots of concerts, lots of open houses and other activities. So I want to thank all of our students and staff for working on creating such wonderful events. I'm looking forward to attending as many as I can. I basically put the calendar on the dining room table and told my husband, if you want to know where I'm going to be, that's where I'll be. Just look at the calendar and I'm going to be somewhere. So, but there, it's, it's an exciting time of year and I appreciate all the work. During May, we're going to be celebrating Staff Appreciation Week. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. And later, we'll be celebrating Classified Employee Appreciation Week. I'm very proud to have been both a classified and a certificated employee in the district. So I wanted, I want to offer a huge thank you to all of our employees. And lastly, thank you to Jerry and the Kiwanis for honoring our, our students every month. You had a lot, last night, you had a lot of parents in the background with giant smiles on their faces as they watched, as they heard accolades for their children. That was really nice to see, but I appreciate the Kiwanis recognizing our students because we're pretty darn proud of them and you, you publicize it and get it out there so everybody knows how proud we are of them. So, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, and we are going to move on to student board member comments.
Well, good evening, everyone. I wanted to start off by echoing what my fellow board members have said, but happy Administrative Professionals Day. I know you've heard it a lot today, but thank you for all that you do, especially because you do do it all. So I can honestly say that I wouldn't be sitting up here knowing what I'm doing without you. So thank you, Mrs. Montero, for all that you do. I also wanted to say congratulations to Skills USA for their successes on the state level when I was talking to Mr. Garcia the other day and he's just, especially he mentioned earlier, but one of the categories was one that they had never competed in and they didn't know how well they'd be able to do. So to be able to venture that and to train students to be able to master that so quick, so quickly and to place first statewide, that's an incredible achievement and I'm looking forward to seeing what they do at nationals. I wanted to echo board member Espinoza's comments on Denim Day. I didn't realize until after I left the house, but it truly is important. I believe this was something that had been started because of an Italian court case, but to wear denim in support of survivors of sexual assault and also to combat the narrative of victim blaming. I also wanted to echo what Dr. Carter Ryan said. I also wanted to echo what Dr. Carter Ryan said. In recognizing Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day, I think it's incredibly important for everyone to be just not citizens of our community, but also global citizens, and to keep an eye out for the issues that are going on, because I know in Arts Sock, there is still a huge conflict going on, and there are, it's a huge humanitarian issue at hand. I also wanted to congratulate our newly-installed mayor, Tom Chavez, as well as new council member, Ed Chen, and congratulate and thank Council Member Fernando Viscara for his service for so many years to our city. He really stepped up in tumultuous times, especially with the pandemic and all, everything going on, and so I wanted to thank him for that. Recently, for ASB, we put on Mr. TC, and for those of you who don't know, it's just a fun, a fun little show that our ASB works with Pep to put on, and it's just to have fun for a night as a community, and it's kind of like a boys' pageant of sorts. And so it's, it's been a tradition for some senior boys, and it's just a really exciting tradition that we were able to continue. I also wanted to congratulate the boys on their volleyball team, on their volleyball game. I was there to watch a few, and I don't know, one of my friends goes to every game, and she always says that I think a pattern with the games is that they never cut you off at set three or set four, it always goes to set five. And so for her sitting through all that, it's always very stressful, but I'm very glad that the boys' volleyball team made it to CIF, and I think on Instagram they said it was the first time since 2019 that the boys' volleyball team has made it to CIF, so wishing them all the best. Likewise, I was also able to attend the Book of Will performance. I always thought I was more of a musical person, but I think that performance really changed my minds, and to have, to see friends up there performing and the emotional depth that they possessed in their performances, it was truly something to behold. And similarly with performing arts, I was also lucky to attend the District Choral Festival. And so for myself, I was in chorus from fourth grade to sixth grade, and then at Oak Avenue, normally they have you choose extracurricular for a semester and then switch it off. I did chorus for all four semesters. So watching this as a senior, it was just really adorable to see all the little kids, the elementary school kids performing, and then Oak, and then the high school in Brighter Side, and to see different incorporations of all that, whether it was like men's choir or just the different levels of choir in high school, it was, it was a really enjoyable event. Also, I attended, I was able to visit Culverly Elementary two times since our last meeting. The first time just to meet with the Culverly Student Council, and the day that I was there, they had a student council meeting, and they were deciding what to vote on, and I was like, "Okay, well, what do we have coming up?" And they were deciding how to use some of the money that they fundraised and what playground equipment to purchase. And so they were debating between like a basketball or a hula hoop, so just the different playground materials. And so it was really heartwarming, exciting to see that kind of a debate go on for their student council. And then the second part, I think it was what, sort of what Board Members Sneed touched on, was the collaboration between the city and the district with the Neighborhood Watch Program that was held at Culverly Elementary School. And for those of you who haven't been able to attend a Neighborhood Watch Program, it's incredibly informative. They have members of the Sheriff Department there, and you get to learn more about the statistics and how to keep yourself safe, and if that isn't incentive enough, they also have free tacos. So that's always very motivational. Yeah, free tacos. And then also, we've been celebrating Staff Appreciation Week at high school and across all our campuses, and I just wanted to do a shout out, oh, it's Mrs. Garner. Shout out to PTSA for their support in celebrating that, for they've been great on sending out notices to all their members, helping us bring in donation items to celebrate the teachers, so we were able to like run the coffee cart that we do all around campus and to set up in the staff lounge every day, and so we could not have been able to accomplish that without PTSA support. And then, let's see, three more things. One more thing is, I was talking with some Brighter Side kids today, and they were super, super thrilled to see AP Music Theory being discussed and on the agenda. And so it's a really incredible program, and I think when, when folks are looking at, especially which schools they are, to be able to see that Temple City High School offers AP Free Calculus, AP Music Theory, we're expanding on our computer engineering design programs, to see all these different extracurriculars and a wide, broad set being offered, I think that's incredible. And I think, Ms. Espinoza, both of your daughters are majoring in music, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so got that early pathway going. And then I also wanted to shout out our TCHS admin and one of our students, Savannah Wang, who's been very hard at work corralling all the students and all the different groups and all, to make the effort to do incredible decorations and set up at the media center, and it seems like we're quite ready and excited to host the SELPA this Friday, so encourage us to stop by and see a lot of the great work that all of our different groups have been putting together to make it possible. And then last thing for me today is, we know we have a lot of incredible educators in this district, and I think of no better place to celebrate it than with Mike Fong's Outstanding Education Awards. And so for those of you who aren't aware, our Assembly Member hosts an annual awards just to recognize incredible educators in our district, and we had quite a few representatives last year. And so if we want to continue that, I encourage our community members, students, just folks in general, to either go to Assembly Member Fong's website or Instagram, and you guys can submit nominations for educators in our district so that we can recognize the incredible work that our educators do. And with that, that was my last comment of the evening, so thank you so much.
So who's Mr. Temple City? Who's Mr. Temple?
Timothy Hinkley.
Oh, okay.
Timothy Hinkley.
Timothy Hinkley.
Yeah, he's involved in John Flick's and bought up the woodworking too for.
He's also the leader of the Marla team.
Yeah.
He is Mr. Temple City.
Yeah, he's following in the brother's footsteps, right?
Okay, superintendent comments.
Thank you. So, good news, we received confirmation from the Department of State Architect that our Increment One plans are approved, which means that we are able to start the construction project on the stadium renovation. And that's a good thing, because if we started late, then we might finish late, but I still need a lot of positive thoughts, because we don't know what's going to happen during the course of the year, whether it be rain or any kind of delays in shipping or supply chain issues, but everything we're being told right now is we are on track, so that's what we're going to stick with and keep hoping for, that we will be done by graduation next year with the stadium. That being said, talking about the stadium, I had the opportunity to, Anthony and I had the opportunity to go speak to the Temple City High School staff this morning regarding the stadium project, and, you know, it was interesting, because we literally talk about this project every day, every day, and we just assume that people know what is happening, and that's not always the case. And so it was nice to be able to get in front of staff and share with them what is going to be happening on their campus. But one of the things that I did want to mention to them, and I had the opportunity to, is everything that we do is part of a much broader plan, and so, you know, some of the things that we're doing right now is in order to create space for things that we want to do in the future. But we also, we also walk this very fine line of how we balance, and, you know, I appreciate what Amir had shared, you know, in the sense that there are a lot of opportunities for our students, and we have to find those opportunities that attract students, whether they be our own students or outside students, and entice them to come to our district, but our goal really is to, to do a little bit in each of those areas, and obviously we have a very strong performing arts program, and we have been using our Prop 28 monies and some of the other grant monies that we've received to improve our performing arts programs. We have amazing science clubs, and we're using some of our CTE money to promote not just our CTE courses, but also to improve some of our science offerings for students, and figuring out a way that we can make all of these things feed into another area of our curriculum or campus or activities, so that it doesn't look like just one group is benefiting, but we really are trying to make sure that all of our students benefit from the resources that we have. And so it is a fine line, it's a, and we do our best, and so I hope that our staff and our students see that we really are working to improve what we offer to all of our students. I've been receiving, a lot of people have been asking me for updates on Marlies Reyna's services, and we received word from the family that they're going to make the services private. Ms. Reyna had selected a church prior to passing, and it is a small church and cannot accommodate a large amount of people, so they're going to make it private for family, but what they've encouraged everybody is, we're going to be doing a dedication at Oak in her honor on May 23rd from four to five, and there's going to be numerous family members from her family there, and so they asked that if people really wanted to pay their respects, that they would come to that event on May 23rd. So we're going to continue to share that, but if you hear from people asking about what the services might, or where the services might be, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware and you can help pass that information along. I normally do not like to repeat things up here, but I think there are two things worth repeating. During the Kiwanis Student of the Month, I would cringe a little bit because I never knew what was going to be said, and it was very refreshing to hear two of our students at Oak mention our food services program. And I just wanted to say thank you to Marisol Cortez and all of our food services staff for the work that they put into it, and I know that when we were not receiving favorable comments, they really did take it to heart. And so they have worked so hard to improve the program for students, and we know, we are never going to make 100% of the people happy, but to hear two of our students acknowledge the work that has been done and appreciate their efforts, I just, I really wanted to say thank you to that group. And I think it's appropriate that we have a resolution on the agenda today to honor our food services staff. And then the second one, I hesitate a little bit because I think she's going to be impossible to work with tomorrow after all of the love and support that she's getting. But I do want to say thank you to Marie for everything that you do, and like Amir, without your support, I don't know that Richard would know what to do up here. I'm sorry. I couldn't save me, Richard. But thank you, Marie, for everything you do for all of us. I appreciate you.
Okay, moving on to written communications, we did receive, we received the Second Interim Report Letter from the LA, Los Angeles County Office of Education, LACO, stating that the second interim had a positive certification and the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the next two years. LACO did remind us that we are in deficit spending, so we need to look at our cost and to make sure that the budget is planned accordingly. I don't think, I don't think we had any other written communication. Okay. Moving on to item 16, review Williams Complaints Quarterly Summary for January 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2024. Mr. Lohman.
So this is the quarterly report. We had one complaint, I'm not quite sure if it really was a complaint or not, but because of transparency, I wanted to include it on there. It was related to facilities. The issue was addressed by Anthony and his team, so thank you, Anthony, and your team. So it was addressed right away, and we're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item 17, the adoption of Resolution 2324-23, ordering the governing board member election to be held on November 5th, 2024.
Thank you. So this is a legal requirement that we acknowledge, that the seats in districts one, two, and three are up for election, and so that's the process that we have to go through in order to make sure that it, it is put on the ballot if necessary.
Okay, this is a roll call. I'll make a motion to prove it. Motion by Member Georgino, second by Member Bell. Okay, this is roll call. Member Espinoza.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Student Board Member Amir King.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
I forgot to.
Member Georgino.
Yes.
Member I am a yes, and Member Bell.
Yes.
Okay, that passes by roll call four to zero. Moving on, adoption of Resolution 2324-24, proclaiming the week of May 6th through the 10th, 2024 as Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yeah, so I, I'm going to just speak to 18 and 19. Member Espinoza said it best, there, we cannot do what we do without the support of our teachers and our classified staff. I just want to say that we recognize the, the difficult times that we are in, and how you all persevere and make sure that things are good for our students, and it is, it is greatly appreciated by all of us, and I thank PTA for the efforts that they put forth to make sure that our staff is recognized during this time.
Thank you. Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay. Motion by Member Espinoza.
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Member Bell. Student Board Member.
Yes.
Okay. This is also, we have a lot of roll calls tonight. Member Georgino.
Yes.
I am a yes. Member Bell.
Yes.
Member Espinoza.
Yes.
That passes by roll call four to zero. Okay. Dr. Kuhn already explained this one, but we'll go ahead and do the adoption of Resolution 2324-25, proclaiming the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024 as Classified and School Employees Week. Do I have, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Member Sneed, second by Member Espinoza.
Yes.
Okay. Member King. Let's see. I am a yes. Member Bell.
Yes.
Member Espinoza.
Yes.
And Member Georgino.
Yes.
Okay. That passes by roll call four to zero. Thank you all for everything you do. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 20, receiving board policy for the first reading. A board policy, 1250 visitors, outsiders.
So we'd like to update our policies with changes, whether it be for legal reasons or through CSBA, and so this policy really is just something that helps us to ensure the security of our campuses and how we, our procedures for allowing visitors and outsiders, whether it be on campuses or in our district offices, and how we handle those individuals when they come on to our campus.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the first, this board policy for the first reading?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Bell, second by Member Georgino. Any other discussion for first reading? Student Board Member King.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes four to zero. Moving on to Educational Services, approval of AB 922, Los Angeles County Plan for Expelled Students.
So this is LACO, LA County Office of Education's Expelled Student Plan that encompasses all the schools in LA County, and so us agreeing to it, we replace our students if we do expel them, but we also show what other opportunities we have in lieu of expulsion, so this plan would. So this plan would, would benefit our students if we ever got to that expulsion place.
And this is reviewed annually that they?
I'm sorry, it's reviewed every three years. So the plan is updated every three years.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Member Georgino, second by Member Bell. Any further discussion?
I have a question. On the district-operated educational alternatives, I see that, that were listed on here. So does that mean, like, if somebody in another district expels a student, they could apply to come to our district, or?
It could be, but it's also the placement out of our own students.
Oh, okay.
So the bringing in of students from the outside who have been expelled is always tricky. So it's not something we, we look at very often.
What do districts do that don't have an alternative? Because there's?
Then they look for LA County. So Laco has schools that they would place the students at.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Student Board Member King?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes four, zero. Moving on to item 22, approval of the new course at TCHS, AP Music Theory.
So this one we're excited for. It's been a long time in coming, lots of conversations, easily three, four years of conversation. So Mr. Slaymaker and Ms. Lee are going to present for us tonight.
Hello again. So we have this AP Music Theory course in front of us today. This is a description. It's an introductory college-level.
Music Theory Course, where students cultivate their understanding of music theory through analyzed, performed, and notated music as they explore concepts like pitch, rhythm, form, and musical design. As you know, we have many, many talented musicians in our school, both vocally and instrumentally. And this course invites both of them to take a college-level course, to start that learning that they might want at the college level. And so this is some of the skills that are learned in the course. I, I don't feel like I need to read all of them to you, but it, I'll just kind of explain. It's for both our talented musicians, both instrumentally and vocally. They, some of the things that they learn is not only sight reading, but what you might call reverse sight reading, where you hear a piece and you're able to notate it. And, and it's a, it, it gives them credit in a, in a way, college credit in a music category that we don't currently offer on our campus. And so as Amir said, we already have quite a few students interested in taking this course next year, if it's available to them, at least one full section. So, and, and I think from there it could grow even more because we know we have a lot of those talented musicians on our courses. So one of the recommended prerequisites is the ability to read and write musical notation and basic voice or instrument performance skills. So you can't just come into it without any knowledge, but if you have some of those basic skills, which we have quite a few students who do, then, then you would be eligible and to be successful in this course.
Just to add to that comment, so what we saw with Jack and Kyle is that our students at the elementary level are learning to read the music. And so as we, we map out that progression of our music programs, this is that, that endpoint. To me, it feels like the backside of music, where they do all the, the practical, and this is the theoretical side of it behind it.
Yeah, and so a lot of our students are interested in that. We did a survey earlier this year, and over 100 students said they'd be interested in taking the course at some point in their high school career. For next year, we have over 25 students that are already requesting the course if it is available and approved this evening. So some of the benefits are similar to ones we discussed. It broadens our horizon of which students are able to take AP courses. As I said, we don't have a college-level music course at our high school, but we have a lot of interest in music. And so it, it, they can earn college credit in a category that we don't currently offer. And it meets requests from students and families for more of a broad AP, more variety in our AP courses. And so to have one in a performing arts category is really a, a great step for us. So the impact would be, students in current music-related courses have shown the most interest, obviously, in the course. We do have musicians on our campus that aren't currently taking music courses that would also be interested. But we don't have any course that covers the, the background or the theory of music. And so it really meets a need for our students to become more well-rounded musicians. Instead of just the performance piece, it's the theory piece behind that, like Mr. Loman said. So, yeah, are there any questions that you have about this course? We can do our best to answer them.
Do you have a teacher already?
Yeah, we have a teacher on our campus who have taught, who has taught this course before at another district. She, she feels confident that she would be able to teach it well with some of our students also.
Just a comment. I was really happy to see this on, on the agenda, and I, and people, I'm glad the kids see the value in a course like this because it is, it trains your mind in a different way. And if you are pursuing music, you know, we have two daughters that pursue music at the college level, and having this foundation is critical. If you don't have it, you are way, way behind when you get to college. So I'm, I'm glad to see it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for presenting. This is so exciting. Okay, do I? Sorry, they need their, they need the clicker back, sorry. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new course?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Member Espinoza, second by Student Board Member King. Any further discussion? Okay, Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That passes, that passes four, zero. Okay, moving on to adoption of Board Resolution Number 2324-26 exempting the Temple City Continuation School Site Plan Project from Temple City's zoning ordinances. And two-thirds vote is required for this.
The next two resolutions we request Board to approve is related to DDLC portable relocation to the district parking lot. Before the starting presentation, we will show the Board and our audience what it looks like. So here's a picture.
So you can see this is a, an aerial view of the district parking lot. Currently, what we have at the high school is the same number of portables and restrooms, offices at the current DDSLC location, which is on the high school campus. We would be moving them over to our campus, taking up probably about a third of the parking lot area. And this is the configuration. And then this is a rendering of what the architects have put together for what it would look like onsite. So the, the only real difference, we would be transporting all of the current portables that we have, but there would be a new configuration of a ramp for ADA access that we would be putting in, and it would be basically a single ramp that would, would cover the entire area with multiple staircases and then ramps at each end for students. The only difference in this rendering, however, is, well, there are a couple of differences. The buildings will be closer together in order for us to maximize the space. And then the shade structure that you see there would not be the same shade structure. We're actually talking about a solid shade structure that we would be putting in because although these are nice, they're not, they're not good when it rains. And so we needed something that, that provided shelter from, you know, more of the elements. So that would be a solid shade structure. And we have a couple of green spaces that we would be putting in planters and whatnot, but this is a, a pretty decent rendering of what it would look like on, in the district parking lot.
So this resolution, basically, the 9700 last turnus is belong to the last turnus commercial zooms. So as a public entity, we're required to comply with the city's zoom ordinance. So government code also gave a district an, an option to exempt the zoning due to the education facility need. So if we comply in the city zoning, it's going to take a time, and the time, you know, it's six weeks away for a project kickoff. So it's important that every step of project, we meet the deadline, deadline. So we require the Board to approve this resolution exempt the district from the city zoning. And this resolution did require the two-thirds of the board vote to approve it. And then the district also, it is also required district to notify the city within the tend of board approval.
And I had a conversation with our city manager regarding this. And when I talked to him about moving over to our district office parking lot, essentially what he said is, if it's adults, if we were putting in portables for, to extend our staff or whatnot, we would not be able to exempt from zoning requirements. But because it's a student-focused classroom spaces, we are exempt as a school district, and we're able to do what we need to be able to do on our own property. And so he was the one who shared with us that all we would need to do is have the Board pass this exemption, and then we would be able to move forward.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Member Georgino.
I'll second.
Second by Member Bell. Any other comments? Okay. Student Board Member King?
Yes.
Okay. This is also a roll call. Member Bell?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And IMES, that passes four, zero by roll call. Moving on to item 24, Connie just explained this, adoption of Resolution 2324-27 determining that the Temple City Continuation School Site Plan Project is exempt from the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act, deciding to carry out the project and directing the filing of a notice of exemption.
Yes. So this, within this big project, this is the second time we request Board to adopt about resolution for our exempt, the sequel requirement. So another sequel, there's a couple categories, because the purpose is to make sure that the impact of a project with the environment. So this project, basically, we are qualified exemption in the three category, class three, 11, and 32. Class three and so to basically allow, if this is a small project, if the square footage is under the 10,000 or less than five acres, we're entitled to the exemption. But this project will only have seven portable admin, admin office and the restroom, so totally is, is around 8,330. So the mid is category. The other category is 11, basically say that if the project next to the existing facility for our district, it's also can be allowed to exemption. So this is, this is our district office right in our parking lot. It is next to the, to our existing facility, so we are also entitled under this assumption.
Okay. Thank you for explaining all that to us. Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Member, Student Board Member King, I'll second that. Any further discussion? I think we're okay. Student Board Member King?
Yes.
This is roll call. Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
IMES and Member Bell?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four, zero by roll call vote. Moving on, we have another resolution. Adoption of Resolution, Board Resolution Number 2324-28 recognizing April 29th through May 3rd, 2024 as School Nutrition Employees Week.
Yeah, which, again, through this resolution, we just want to thank all our food services work for their dedication, hard work, and especially improve our meal service in our district.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I stopped at Emperor for their, for their assembly this morning. A lot of the students were eating their breakfast, and I asked one of the, the staff there, I said, how many kids stop for breakfast? They said, they have about 100 students come every morning for breakfast, so they have a meal before they start the day. And so our school nutrition workers are stepping up ever since we've gone to two meals a day. They've really stepped up all the work that they're doing for our students, so. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Espinoza and seconded by Student Board Member King. Any further discussion? Okay, preferential vote, Student Board Member King?
Yes.
Okay. Member Georgino?
Yes.
IMES. And Member Bell?
Yes.
And Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes four, zero by roll call. Moving on to 20, item 26, approval of authorization for the county superintendent of schools to make 2023, 2024 year and budgetary appropriation transfers.
Our school fiscal year is ending 30s, and then adequate allow the county of education to authorize them transfer and transfer money within our accounts, so that allow them to issue the checks and meet our district obligation during, especially during the year closing, because the time is sense. So however, this adequate also required the board approval to allow the county to such a transfer, budget transfer. So we request the board, as a routine item, every year we request board to approve, and the transfer is we're starting within the, the same funds and same program, and they are next to the unrest general, and the committed fund, we will be requested last.
Okay. Thank you for always making things so understandable. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Member Bell?
I'll second.
Second by Member Espinoza. Student Board, any further discussion? Okay, Student Board Member King?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then approve four, zero. Moving on to item 27, approval of revision to Architectural Services Agreement with Little Diversified Architecture Consulting to Include the Softball Field in the Temple City High School Stadium Renovation Project. Back to Connie.
So we, we request Board approval for this additional service because we added more scope work. The scope work is come from the high school softball.
And I just wanted to add, first off, thank you to our board for allowing us to bring a couple of times revisions to the architect's agreement and for various reasons, and I think all good ones. You know, we, we originally had brought a, in a revision to the agreement to add the sports medicine classroom out in the field area. And now we're bringing this to you to add the, the softball renovations to the area as well. And the reason being, we knew that at some point we were going to have to do something with the softball field where it was at, for a couple of reasons. One, they were too far away from the fieldhouse that we're putting in, and they deserve access to that fieldhouse just as much as every other sport that's out there. And as we create a master plan for where we're going in the future, by moving the, the learning center, by moving softball, and by moving tennis, it actually creates space for us in the future to, to look at projects that are of interest to our community. And so when we did this, we, we, I asked the contractors that we were working with, and I said, hey, you know, we're thinking about doing softball somewhere down the line, but what would we save in cost if we added it to our scope of, of the project now versus later? Because you're already mobilized, you're already going to be doing the demo work, you already, we already have workers coming in to, to lay turf. And they told me that the, the savings would be about 20% by doing it now versus doing it later, particularly with the, the amount of workers that we have onsite, and also the escalation costs that would come into play if you do this in a year or two from now with the inflation being what it is. And so we wanted to move forward with this. And so we wanted to move forward with this. And so a couple of things. When we do these fields, I think it's important to note that it's not just for our athletics. These fields also provide an opportunity for our performing arts, like our band, our color guard, and such to, to utilize fields that are safer for them, to utilize fields that are cleaner for them. And so this fence that you see here, it's actually going to be a removable fence. It's going to look permanent, but it will be a removable fence so that when season is not in, we actually have that entire space for our other programs that might need, need to use it. Also, we had talked previously about how we're space poor in our district. And one of our problems, particularly with the fields that we have right now, is they don't have a chance to heal because there's constant use year round on those fields. And they become much unsafer as they continue to be worn. And, and so with this, we have the ability to have access to the fields year round. We don't have to close anything off. And so when we have something going on in the stadium, somebody else can use this surface. And so same thing with baseball. And so we have the ability for more of our students to access more of our fields and to keep them as safer environments for our students as they practice. And so we're also, just so you know, those on the side, we have a couple of, of bullpens that we're going to be turfing as well. And there's going to be some batting cages. We have three batting cages going in as well for, or four. Is it three or four, Anthony? Four batting cages that are going to be there for our girls softball as well.
Is there seating for?
So yeah, we'll have seating behind. We haven't talked about seating in the outfield yet. I mean, it's possible we might do that. But I think with the, the configuration of what we're going to be doing here, seating behind home plate and on the sides will be better than what we have currently. Because the, if you notice the dugouts that we have currently at our softball field, they're, they're masonry brick or concrete. And so you cannot see through them. Well, I don't think you can see through them. But these are chain link and you will have, you will be able to see through, which I think will provide a better experience for our parents. Because if you don't get there early and get the bleachers that are directly behind home plate or out in left field, it's tough to see what's going on. And so I think overall, this will be a much better experience. And it moves our, our female athletes out to the area where all of our sports, with the exception of aquatics, will be. Everything we have other than aquatics is going to be in this area. So they'll have access to everything that everybody else does as well.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
So the additional fee for the architect service is around one hundred ninety three thousand. There is changes, we revised agenda upon your, in front of you. The dollar amount should be, total dollar amount should be one point eight million dollars.
Say that again, Connie?
Okay, so there's a revision for this agenda. The add of service for the design for the softball is total cost is one hundred ninety three thousand dollars. But the update right now, the entire contract was little, is up to now is one point eight million dollars. Yes.
And we're using Measure S money for it?
Yes, so, so, so yes, so Measure S money, when we starting this fiscal year is around this four point nine million dollar balance. So our plan is use all the Measure S dollar amount. And then so when we starting issue, potentially issue the new bond in August, then we have, the account is very clean. So, so that's, that's our goal. But also we have another part of money for fund of forty. So fund of forty, again, it's a, is a for capital orderly only, not for the anybody salary. But that funding is much more flexible. We, this project will cost a big money. So we want to make sure that we have a layer of the fund, how we use the funding.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Need a motion first.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by member Georgino, second by member Espinoza, any other discussion?
I just wanted to add that I'm really happy that we're doing this. And I think it's very important that we continue to give the girls the same quality facilities that we give the boys. And so I think this is a great addition to our sports complex.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I mean, Ms. Georgino, you said they've won what, forty seven games in a row? Clearly, they're going to need it.
Rio Honda League games, yeah. That's over four years, so.
Amazing, amazing.
We may need bigger bleachers.
Yeah, we might. That's true.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, student board member King?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes four zero. Moving on to item twenty eight, approval of notice of completion for the Emperor Elementary School Roof Repelletation Project.
Good evening, Board President Sneed, members of the board, Dr. Kuna and executive cabinet. This is notice of completion, the work has been done. We've had our final walks and sign offs. And this closes out the project in the county's eyes to make sure all of the subs get paid. So it's just customary. Successful project.
This was a two story building, correct?
Mm-hmm, so we've essentially given that, that roof system another fifteen years. Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Motion by member Bell?
I'll second.
Second by member Espinoza, any questions? Or comments? Okay, student board member King?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved four zero. Moving, thank you so much, are you, are Nick?
I think he'll be there for. Just a few things.
Just a few things here. Approval of the Sourcewell procurement piggyback contract number zero four, one, one, two, three dash M S L with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the Temple City High School Stadium renovation project.
So by approving the piggyback contract, essentially we, we are able to procure long lead items is one hurdle. And the second hurdle is we continue to be fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible, and try to minimize any monies that, sorry.
Any money will be started in the third party because.
Yes, markup, any markup, sorry.
Yes.
I was looking for that word. Any markup by the, by the contractors out there. So we will procure material ahead of time and have it installed once they are ready.
So I just want to. Okay, good, yes.
Yeah, as, so as we move along, as we have the material here, we're not worrying about.
For the long lead items, yes, and that's one of them. Is sourcing quite a bit of the, the long lead items to kind of combat that, that part of the project.
They still have a supply chain issues. So we, this project definitely have a deadline. And we try to, our target is finish on, on May twenty twenty five. So by use this piggyback, so in the, in the last couple of weeks, when we submitted the project, we'll be, this was included future project. We normally use a piggyback or C M S contract. So the purpose is show us the time for procurement so that we were able to take advantage for the bid contract to have a good price. But we don't need to go through the advertising, go to the opening through the process. So this contract, pickable contract actually was in other state. So because California has its law, its own law regulation governing our facility project, we also add additional language and make sure that the facility is in here and then the, the contract will follow the litigation in California.
And as part of this, when we talk about long lead items, just so you guys have an understanding of what, what we're sharing here. So when we talk about things like bleachers and, and lighting, the, the lead time for this is six to eight months. And we're talking about a project that we're going to try and complete in a year. So if we wait to order any of those things, there is a good chance they will not be here in time for us to complete the project. So ordering now helps to ensure that these items will be here before the project completion, which we're hoping for in a year.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by member Espinoza?
Second.
No, go ahead. And seconded by member Bell? Preferential vote?
Yes.
I'm sorry, were there any other questions, Anthony? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, that passes four zero. And I imagine you're going to explain number thirty also.
This one I am.
Okay, approval of agreement amendment for the application and reporting with Cal Shape Ventilation Program Upgrade and Repair Grant with Empowered Solutions. Is it Vergey?
Vergey. So back in twenty twenty two, we started this grant program with the intentions that we would get to this stage. And that is our replacement slash upgrade stage. We have completed phase one, which involved assessments, some slight repairs, and really just a database on where our current systems are and where we can improve on them. We have submitted that to the C E C. We are waiting for final approval so that we can apply for phase two, which currently there's only a handful of school districts that have. So we are very much at the front of that list. Unfortunately, they have changed some dates on us, so we, we will have to push to get this completed. But this will allow Vergey to amend their contract for the approval of that grant and be able to take advantage of that. We are projected to receive six million dollars from the C E C for H VAC replacements, which is a huge for us.
That is phase two. So original agreement with Vergey do not have a dollar amount. So actually, our need, Anthony and his team did the inventory count for our H V A C. Our need is more than six million dollars. So we need to prioritize our limited fund. Our T C H S definitely, the project definitely is a first priority. So basically, we make sure that in a contract, we amend the contract language and make sure that the project is up to the state, the Cal Shape approved grant dollar, which is six million dollars. If for whatever, we hope we can get approved for six million dollars. But if for whatever reason, because of limited state funding and so much, so many district to apply, our grant is less than six million dollars, then the project will be only up to the grant award amount. So that we make sure that the funding we set aside for other projects such as T C H will not be impacted.
Correct. And just like phase one, whatever our grant is for, we'll go strictly for that project. None, none of it comes out of district funding.
Can I ask, is this, is this related to?
Do you get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by member Georgino, second.
Second.
By member Bell? Okay, I have a question. Is this related to, as we were moving into COVID and they were, we're doing a lot of additions to the ventilation system, to better filters, things like that, to.
Part of that is.
Is that part of it?
Part of it is COVID. The other part is the state is moving towards mandating school districts to monitor CO2 and affect the, the CO2 levels in the classrooms. Unfortunately, they're, with the current setup of many H VAC systems, you aren't able to, to successfully affect CO2. And there's many studies that show the importance of the CO2 levels. So other than opening door or window. So what the state has provided through Cal Shape is the replacement program so that we can get better H VAC systems where we will be able to affect those CO2 levels through economizing the air, the outside air and bringing that in and lowering the, or raising the fresh air intake. And all of that was geared or funded through Cal Shape.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you so much. Preferential vote, student board member McQueen?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved four zero. And we're moving on to item thirty one, approval of purchase agreement of California Multiple Awards Schedule Pricing and Provisions with S T S Education.
So Connie and I are going to kind of tag team this one. I think we're both excited for different reasons. Our front of the classroom displays, except for the new building, the new buildings at the high school, all predate me arriving in the district. So they're all at least a decade old. And what we're seeing is they are, they're rapidly dying on us. And so our hope is with the approval of this, this agenda item, is that we'll be able to purchase one hundred and forty three new front of the classroom boards to put into the classrooms to enhance the learning experience for our students, also give our teachers tools to help mitigate learning loss as we continue to exit the pandemic. And so the funding for this is coming from learning loss mitigation funds that will expire soon. And the funding is not intended for, for salaries, but to intended to enhance that learning for our students. And so like I said, I'm very excited about this. It's been a long time in coming. I want to thank Quok for, for doing the legwork on it. But we're at that point now where if we don't make the purchase, we're going to go back to whiteboards. And, and that's not who we are. So Connie, you want to add in on that?
We all know that how important technology play its role in the current education. You know, thanks, this is only good things after pandemic, right? If we talk about what's the impact of a pandemic. I think the district need to have some decision need to make. We know that we need the technology, our project and the whiteboard is going to be end their life plan. But again, our funding is going to be, you know, tied to. So this is a good opportunity. We have this one time money, this allowable cost and how we strategically use the one time money so that our charge dollar and Richard general fund can be last longer. So that's why we work with Richard and, and his team and with Quok work diligently to try to get the best price. And we, we find the time is perfect and we need to move forward quickly.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the purchase agreement?
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by member Bell, second by member Espinoza. I have, I have a couple of questions. When do we, when are we looking to start?
So we're going to order tomorrow. As long as this is passed, we'll order tomorrow. And then they'll arrive, we would like them to arrive. The company will house them for us until we're ready to have them installed. And then the installation hopefully will begin in the summer.
And they should be finished by the start of school?
Quok, would they be finished by August fifteenth-ish? Quok says yes.
It's all on your, all on your shoulders. Will this be something that the staff will need training in how to work these?
So we have, we have smart boards in the rooms now that they use. This is, they're going to be a bit different, so there will be a learning curve. That training will be provided probably through Quok's team. They are, they're intuitive though. And so it's not like we're, we're learning something brand new. There will be a bit of a learning curve, but it's nothing like it was when we went from whiteboards to smart boards.
And I, and might I add, you know, as part of the thank you to Quok, when he did this, one, he's, he's purchasing boards that we're going to be able to service ourselves later. But Quok, how much money did you save versus what we were looking at? About three hundred thousand dollars over what we were originally looking to purchase, which allows us to. About $300,000 over what we were originally looking to purchase, which allows us to purchase more boards, and we know that not every board is end-of-life, but every board that Richard was talking about is approaching end-of-life, and so we had to be proactive in nature and secure them while we had the funding to do so.
Any other questions or?
I like the fact that you have a five-year onsite repair plan. That's really beneficial and helpful to you guys.
Exciting.
The beauty of the boards is, like Art said, we could service them, so if they go bad, it's not, it's not like what we're dealing with now.
Right.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions? Okay, student board member King.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes 4-0. And we are moving on to item number 32, approval of the 20, boy, that looks, seems like a long way off.
It is, it is.
The 2026, 2027 instructional calendars.
So, it does seem like a long ways away. We always try to have a three-year approved calendar, of which with 23, 24 closing out, we want to get this approved as well so that we have it ready to go. This does meet the legal requirements for federal and state, as well as the calendar formula for our TCEA. We did have a collaboration with all three of our union leadership because while there's the instructional one, it will also impact classified, and so, yeah, that is the gist of it, and it, again, follows the same regulations with 180 student dates and the same number of workdays.
And just to add, there is one slight difference in this calendar. Because of where Memorial Day falls, we would have ended on a Wednesday if we followed our normal calendar, which meant high school graduation would have been on a Thursday, and we always graduate on a Friday. And so, we worked with the teams to add a, an additional day off during the year to be able to push us to that graduation day on a Friday for the high school.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by member Giorgino, seconded by member Espinoza, any other questions or comments?
Quick question, does this go on our website?
Yes.
Okay, I occasionally hear people saying, where can I find the district calendars? Okay.
Oh, you know, member, or President Sneed, can I just add one more thing?
Absolutely.
That one day off, I think it's important to say where we put that one day off. So, what it is, is we actually have the two Mondays for the president's days, and Chinese New Year happens to fall on a Saturday, which is in that same three-day weekend as the president's. So, we put that additional day off on a Friday to allow our students to have the Friday, Saturday for Chinese New Year. And then for those who do not celebrate Chinese New Year, it also happens to be Super Bowl weekend, so there's a four-day weekend for Super Bowl. So, I think it's beneficial for quite a few.
Whatever's important to you.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or?
No.
Okay, preferential vote, student board member King. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 4-0. Moving on to approval of the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
So, this too is almost like a routine item year by year, and one that we only use if we need. The area that we have generally needed it for is for special education teachers, just because of the shortages and the vacancies we've had. We currently do have some that we've had to use this, which are short-term permits. We call them like STIPS and/or intern eligible, and we have actually great candidates in there currently right now, but it's better than having a rotating sub and/or a long-term sub because they actually meet some of the qualifications that we are looking for. I will say, unlike other years, we actually had a full day of interviews for special ed teachers specifically today, interviewed about 16 candidates, and like I said during my comments, we have quality, so we are looking to move very fast on those. We're starting reference checks, so I'm hoping that we won't even need this, but again, if, in the event that we do, we want to have it so that we are able to hire with short-term permits and/or interns if we do need.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and then one more thing, we just anticipate eight teachers, we just, because that's just a number based on previous history. I don't anticipate that we will need that. I think if we did need any for the following year, it will likely be anywhere from 1 to 3.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion? Actually, I'll move.
I'll second.
Yeah, I think I heard member Bell first. Okay, moved and seconded to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators, a preferential vote?
Yes.
Any other questions? This is usual, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved 4-0. Moving on to our consent agenda. These are routine items approved by one motion and one vote unless a member of the board or audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. Anybody have anything they wanted to? Yeah, okay, then we will move ahead with our consent agenda.
I'll move.
As long as I can turn my fingers, my fingers working. Okay. Okay, motion by member Giorgino.
I'll second.
Seconded by student board member King.
Because this has employee stuff. I'll take it, is that right? Yeah, I'll second.
Member Espinoza. Okay, student board member King.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes 4-0. Okay, moving on to item 42, board requests and comments. Anybody have any other comments they want to make? Okay, we don't have any future agenda items. Item number 44, additional public comment on agendized and non-agendized items. I don't see any comments. I see nobody with a paper that they filled out. And moving on to item 45, I am going to make the motion that we, that we adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of Marlies Rena. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by member Bell, like to read a little bit about Marlies. Marlies joined the district in 2013 and quickly made an impact on the lives of not only her science students, but the Oak Avenue community as well. So, great was her mark that she was recognized as the Oak Teacher of the Year only five years later. She played a huge part in growing the Science Olympiad program and encouraged her students to give back. Former students often came back to work with the younger students. The lesson she taught her students spread farther than science concepts. Perhaps the biggest lesson she left us was how to face the hardest hurdles with courage. Despite her battle against cancer, she faced each day with a huge smile and kind words. Her students and the impact she made on their lives will stand as her legacy. Our district sends our condolences to her family and friends. Marlies, you will be greatly missed. Okay, in Marlies Rena's honor, student board member King, we'd like to adjourn. Can you make your vote, please?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes 4-0, and we are adjourned at, at 7:32. Had to get my whole organ.